All right, we've got a minute, half a minute left. Yeah. All right, I go 5:30, let's call in the order. We all please stand for the flag of allegiance. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And we'll start with the... Steve Herren?
Here.
Carol Hongkamp?
Here.
Jay Jones?
Here.
Lexi Murphy?
Here.
Jean O'Nural?
Here.
Kelly Capp?
Here.
Brenda Abel Cruz?
Here.
All right, it's all in attendance, so we have a four attendance of guests. Nick, did you sign in? Glenda and Kelly, did you sign up there if you would please? You got a sheet?
No, I didn't.
No?
I forget.
You're a guest.
I feel like...
We want to acknowledge your presence.
Thank you.
Glenda and Kelly. Okay, first order of official business is item five, to approve the agenda. Do we have an amendment that's needed for this?
Feel like a patriot today.
Carol? To approve the agenda as noted?
I'll second.
And by Jean? Any other discussion?
I see a food truck, yeah, put in there that something that could wait for the next regular meeting.
Yes, May 1st is the day they want it to happen. Is that just the Monday? Or they want to do them on Mondays?
Oh.
So that was why we did that.
So near the same day.
Yeah, the same day, so. That's okay, otherwise, they'd have to wait.
Yeah.
All right, so we've had a motion and a second. A motion by Carol and a second by Jean to approve the agenda. Do we have any other discussion or questions? Otherwise, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, say nay. All ayes, so we carry on. And now we are to the point of the public hearing for the fiscal year '24 budget. Do you need a motion to open the public hearing?
I'll make a motion to open the public hearing.
I'll second.
Okay, motion by Jean and a second by Carol to open the public hearing. Any discussion for that point? Otherwise, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, say nay. Heard all ayes. Public hearing open at 5:32 PM. At the time of the meeting, we have received no written or public or oral comments into the office previously. Do any of you here have comments for the budget? To be officially and formally noted? No? Okay, then hearing done, we can call for a close. They vote to close the public hearing? Or, I mean, I'm sorry, now vote, uh, hold on to call. Say what?
I just had a... Just wanted to go through it a little bit, and, um, so the... So the budget for the year 2024, first column, correct?
Right.
And so where is the... Um, so the total expenditures there, it would be which line?
Year 5245060. Number 28, 28.
And then, uh, the revenues? Would be...
Revenues of the 3548, the line 15.
Okay, yep.
And that's where you end up with line 29.
Shows in the negative.
Right.
The number. So that's the difference between those two. Okay?
Right, so that's... That negative 1696960 is essentially your previously unbudgeted project for Kelly's switchgear. Not that it's your switchgear, but it's our switchgear, but yes, the switchgear and the lagoon. And also, so that pretty much comes up to 135, and the 500 gets you... Well, we already spent some of the 135, so I just did like a 1 and a 3, but... That's where you're ending up over, so it's called deficit spending. So the goal is to do a revenue bond for that electric. That would put back into the account, into the existing... Into the account we currently have, our balance, and that would replenish that back up. For that million like we talked about. Like MRS recommended.
And that revenue bond, does that have to be voted on?
It will be, that'll be coming up not till...
Fall.
What did Glenn say?
The end of this.
Yeah, I forgot what it is.
Probably somewhere in there.
What is it?
Summer, early fall, I think.
Okay, towards the fall, I'm guessing, yep. Okay.
May I ask you a question about what you just said?
Okay.
Um, did I understand you correctly that, um, the deficit spending is from the switchgear? That is being purchased now?
A large part.
Parts of it are being purchased now? Um, and that was unbudgeted?
Correct.
Okay, and that's all coming from the electric reserve, right?
Right now, it is showing that, yes, that has to be, that's part of capital in the project.
Okay.
From electrical.
Okay, will that have any effect on some projects? I thought I heard you talk about at the last meeting, street projects and stuff that were budgeted? Will there be any overlay or...
You mean like fixing other streets or anything like that?
Yeah, I thought I heard something about there were some budgeted projects that you guys didn't get to, that you haven't spent the money, it's still in the budget.
Right.
So I'm just asking if the unbudgeted spending and the budgeted not spending that is coming sometime are going to affect each other in any way?
We're still hoping to get some of that done. Like for streets and all that, yes. Yes, in this fiscal year, right. In this fiscal year, possible, yep.
What?
We're not entirely done with the fiscal year yet, we're still trying to get some of that done.
23. Yeah, I know.
So some of those things we commented on, streets or such repairs and things, will be happening already in 23's budget?
Right, that, yeah, and I did understand that correctly.
Okay.
But, so you're also spending electric funds that was unbudgeted?
Correct, it was not, that's, this project had not been on the table for radar, or I don't know, probably on your radar, but hadn't been on the budget radar previously, so now it needs to take action, so it, using...
Okay, and so, I think we're on the same wavelength there, so the... Just my question, question was, will those two things have any impact on each other in this current year?
Well, they're all part of the overall pie, I guess, if you like to put it that way.
Yeah, and, so you might make some money on it or something?
They could possibly, yes.
The individual line items have to stay in there for expenses. If you go over a line item, you have to make an amendment prior to spending.
Right.
Which is why we put it in there now, because that is where it needs to go for coming ahead for '24. The electric project, for example.
Yeah.
In a capital project. But it may actually take until '24 and beyond to pay.
Right.
Because it'll be a long project.
Right, oh, yeah.
So you have part of it now, part of it in '24.
So are you anticipating the bind issue for this, the proposed year?
For '24?
Yes.
Yes, I believe it would be under '24, correct.
Okay, is that budgeted into the revenue part?
Not yet, no, because it's not official yet and hasn't been actioned, that would... Revenues can change.
Right.
Your budget.
Anything can change in the budget.
They can go up. Well, they can go up without problem, they can go down without problem, it's only the expenses really that have to be accounted for. Does that make sense? I don't know, I guess I'm not catching, if there's still a question? If anyone else is understanding the question better, feel free to answer. I'm not catching what you're... Can you try saying it a different way then? If you're still don't think it's answered, question, or hasn't been answered?
Well, I, I kinda think it has been, I mean, you have two pots of money that you're spending from. One's budgeted, one isn't. One's being spent from, one isn't. I was just asking if those two things will affect each other in any way in this current fiscal year, that's all.
Fiscal year '23.
'23, where you are spending the unbudgeted funds, and I don't know when the budgeted funds were intended to be spent yet. The streets and stuff.
Well, either way, an amendment for fiscal year '23 will happen next month, or May, I guess we're not on Monday, we'll talk May. Then that would have to happen then, to finish off our year to July 1, and then what we're doing in column 1 is all for July 1 and beyond. That's fiscal year '24.
Right.
Okay, you got it then? Anyone else work with you? Sorry about that. Okay, any other further questions or comments from the public or council members? Otherwise, I'd like to entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll second you.
All right, a motion by Jean and a second by Carol to close the public hearing portion of the fiscal year budget line item. Do we have any other problem with that? Hearing done, we'll call for a vote. All in favor of closing the public hearing, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, say nay. All ayes, meeting, public hearing closed at 5:42. Next form, item on the agenda, order of business is to consider a resolution approving the fiscal year '24 budget as published and provided previously.
It's a proper wording for that, because we're not...
It's not that fancy word, really, that have to do.
Yeah, yeah. I think we're just proposing a motion, or...
Propose a resolution, sure.
Okay, I propose a resolution for approving the Plina fiscal year '24 budget.
All right, Jean has made the motion to... Propose a resolution approving the Plina city budget, fiscal year '24 budget. Do we have a second?
I will second.
Second by Carol. We'll call for a roll call vote. Steve Herren?
Aye.
Carol Hongkamp?
Aye.
Jay Jones?
Aye.
Lexi Murphy?
Nay.
Jean O'Nural?
Aye.
Okay, four ayes, one nay. Resolution passes. Okay, it's, uh, the last item officially on our order of business for the night is to approve a Chamber of Commerce food truck Monday, which Kelly Arms is here to speak.
All right, so the Chamber would like to start a recurring event every other Monday unless it turned out to be really popular, or maybe we could add more dates onto it. Uh, we'd like to start May 1st with the Taco Torres food truck, that was in the park, Last Jamboree. Everybody seemed to really like it. And then, that's on May 1st, it's kind of tied in with Cinco de Mayo that's coming up. Um, got a list of potential other food trucks that are possible to come. Um, the reasoning, just to kind of add something to the town every other week, um, during the day, and it'd just be on Mondays. And two of the Chamber restaurants, or two of the restaurants in town are closed on Mondays. Um, JW's, they also have a food truck, which they are on the list, they want to be part of the event. Uh, we'd like to have the trucks parked in front of the Pocket Park over there by the gazebo. Um, and then, to increase usage of that area, would like to set up some tables and chairs in the grassy area just for people that want to sit and eat. Um, encourage the public to kind of use that space downtown. The food truck would be faced towards the sidewalk, so the line wouldn't be out into the road. Uh, so asking for permission from the council to approve food truck Mondays, to bring something fun with a variety to our patrons and employees of the businesses in town. The only other request would be to add a garbage can over there. That way, people that are eating there would have a place to dispose of the garbage. And then, maybe set up a couple cones on Mondays in those few spots, so cars wouldn't park there. Um, and that would be right on East Broadway.
What time will they come in about, do you think?
Um, I think 11:30, or, it could be 11, I don't...
So if they're ready by around 11, they should be good?
Yeah, yeah, I'd say like 11 to 1:30, or 2:00 maybe.
They're just gonna use their generators, or?
Yes.
And they know they have to get like a, what is that, a license, a permit? A permit?
The trucks themselves, I think, have those.
But they have to get one from the town?
Yeah, well, they do not, they don't, they're nonprofit, just like the church and the school and the banks, that's in our...
I thought the trucks.
The trucks, though, because they, because the bank parks in like the Iowa State Bank, then they want to have to...
The food truck's charging now.
Right.
And then, I think that's what she's on.
Yeah, I...
We passed an ordinance a couple years ago that said that you had to have a, get a, something if you run a food truck in town.
Yeah, they have to get a permit to...
Through the town to have it.
You gotta read it. You'll read it again. Yep, and they usually have it, and they gotta have their insurance and all that, and I'm sure they've got it all, because they were in the park and have been before, so... But you would want to touch base. And in any other ones too, that they know that.
Yep.
So.
It's funny, it's a neat idea.
Yeah, me too.
Because there is no place on the way, well, Casey's, but...
Besides the lake, too, but...
Yeah, the lake is open in the summer. That's right, she's open, right?
And Steve, I mean, go to Steve's, but...
Just something fun and different.
Yeah, something different, a variety.
Well, I think if you're doing it every other week, so it's not like it's consistent, I mean...
And that's just through, like, just through the summer, or just this month, through May?
Um, through the summer.
Through the summer? I'll make the motion to approve it for the food truck trucks on Mondays, but look into the permit side of it.
Lexi's made the motion to approve Chamber of Commerce food truck Mondays, uh, to follow all permits as the ordinance lays out. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Jean. We've had a motion and a second to approve Chamber of Commerce sponsoring food truck Mondays, uh, per, following all permits as allowed by the ordinances. Do we have any other questions for Kelly, or any otherwise? Okay, hearing done, we'll call for a vote. All in favor of approving Chamber of Commerce food truck Mondays, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, say nay. Heard all ayes, motion carries. Thank you. And that concludes the business official meeting, portion of our council meetings, we do need a motion to adjourn.
I'm making a motion to adjourn.
Lexi?
I'll second.
Jean seconded to adjourn, and the other debate regarding adjournment. Was all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. All ayes, meaning adjourn by 5:50 PM. And now moving into the workshop part of our meetings, anyone need to pray?
We're gonna drink water.
Drink water, stop them. Give me a second.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kelly.
See ya.
I did include a somewhat draft of what topics to discuss, you don't have to go in that order if they're not in priority order or anything, I just was trying to think of them and find some paperwork for you to look at, since there are likely to be questions raised, so... I'm doing some of the non-official, Pekin Snyder stuff, but...
I'm bringing a can.
I was trying to get some stories written yesterday, especially like this, this morning, and they probably... And then the washer broke.
Is there a nonprofit?
Me too. I'm just waiting now, and I won't know that.
Private, non, so anyone...
Yes, she did.
The ordinance, we can look at it now. All right, ready? All right, so we are now into the workshop part of it, but I would like to have an open and a close, if we would, so...
I'll make a motion to go in a workshop mode.
Okay, Lexi's made the motion to open the workshop.
I'll second.
And Jean seconded. Uh, any discussion? Otherwise, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, say nay. All ayes, motion carries, workshop open at 5:52 PM. Okay, we talked about city-owned properties. Uh, we can have discussion on anything related to that topic. Um, I did provide some references for you, notes of things that either have been discussed previously or that others have asked to discuss. Again, we don't take action, we will not make decisions, we are just hearing each other's thoughts and ideas and trying to come up with what could be an actionable item, either for our May 1 agenda or beyond. So you have, um, there's several, and I probably didn't, did I include all of the properties? I don't even know that I did. As far as Swanson, which obviously is shared, just because that's been part of our discussion recently and is part of our budget as well. And the city of Bull Park, you've invested in the lights, and there's been a lot of demand for pickleball court. I do have material on a full quote that was done for pickleball courts that follows Orange City's. Uh, Bramville is also done on, lots of towns have. Um, and then the Pocket Park, as we just discussed there, where they were parking there, that's actually two, two commercial lots. And, um, as she mentioned too, I think, trying to get people to use it more, there's been discussion about whether we could figure out a way to get people to sit in there and read a book, or to take lunch, or whatever, so there's some thoughts on that. Uh, we could have, there's bush lots, we've discussed, we have two left. One has the easement, and one does not. The Bush Covenants is a copy in your list as well. And the Maple Street and the Broadway properties, we've been talking about a lot, based on evading taxes and special assessments, adding grass, putting up signs, so we're getting some interest from the owner of the sign anyway, and its shell has no idea what to tell them, because we don't have any direction necessarily, an updated form of a direction, so it would be nice to kind of get that figured out, what to do with those properties. You can see the east side-south picture that I got before you, has both of the properties on that first two, anyway, we were discussing. Well, no, it has bush lots and, and Broadway.
That north, the bush lot, is that big enough to put a, this house big enough for the covenants on there?
I would hope so. It would have hopefully been developed at the right south lot and covenant plan in mind. 900 square feet, not less than, that's pretty small house, but...
Yeah, those bush lots are like 108 feet wide and 135 feet deep, and on the, on the east end, there's a utility easement, I believe that's a 30-foot utility easement on it. The furthest north one is 105 by 185.
But that's got the easement in it.
Right. The first one does, yeah, well, it's got the...
More from the north end.
And on the east side of it, I think there's an eas, isn't that right, Kelly? There's an easement on the east end of both lots also, utility easement. On the east end?
The east side, the backside of it?
I thought, I thought...
I think there's one down by Kraus, I would say.
I probably saw that a little time, I don't see what's on here, but this, this is probably what we're looking at.
We used to have a...
We should have copies for those properties.
We used to have easel, at least, but it should have all of them. Well, there's only one lot, two lots in there. There's two lots on the push, they're the same size, they're both 105, 25 times 85, 185. They're 108, 105, 25.
So we own the back of the one behind that place now, too?
What is that?
Well, that's it. Like the, that whole thing of Lamont?
Oh, Lamont, right down to the curb there.
Okay.
And that was the park that was owned commercial.
That's right.
So, take that into account, or go through the rezoning process. And then I also included the Sheldon Crossing information, they've been paying some attention, speaking of duplexes, they're offering a dollar lot for a duplex, the $10,000 when they're done. And then this is their main, their whole residential development, just to give you ideas, there's, obviously, we all know others in nearby towns, but they're all making pretty good bids for encouraging people to come in to build and grow their town. We have limited land to do so, so we should figure out the best way to use it so we can grow. But obviously, the incentive is the name of the game these days. And they can only do the duplex on these, can't they, in Sheldon? Just on those dollar lots, yeah, the other ones are regular lots, you see, they've got it. 220, of those, the duplex ones. Four, I think it's, 10, I don't know how many it was, 10. Total of seven, but there's four left. Yeah, those guys. Three lots sold, four, that's a seller, yeah.
Do you own camp properties over 300 feet in Lake?
Uh, it's in here.
I think it was after 05, or something, yeah, but... But we're trying to sell this two lot.
Two lots, we got 150, 150. We've got the math... We got the math to do if we're back when we did that.
Yeah. But, well, I'm, I just don't know why we're, we're doing, we're selling 150 for a lot like we did those two houses. We took up two lots when it was developed by, um... What's their names for, to be a single house lot? Now, now there's, we're short lots.
So, your suggestion would be to make exclusive matters, dividing that up?
Good, I don't know how we do that, 'cause are the lots deep enough?
They are 75 to 66. One hasn't even owned that since.
I wish we would have thought about, when we did that lane thing, that we would have just kept that piece of land back.
Didn't we turn that, what that was?
Yeah, but we could have kept a chunk of it for the city. And we could have, 'cause at one time, we looked at building a house and thought that we were gonna put like a cul-de-sac in or a street that came around, down there by that, that, those two houses.
I remember that, yeah.
I think it'd be nice, like, ten duplexes in town. But you gotta, I mean, that's gonna take a lot to build and...
Well, you'd also want to just about find out, get people interested, you know?
Right.
Some of these ladies that are just all by themselves might be interested in it. And then we'd have homes for sale, but I don't know. I don't know.
I mean, I feel like either, like even if we want to do small ones, the Maple one or LeMans would be the best, 'cause you think on LeMans would, you could get several.
Yes.
Even though it would take a lot to dirt work, but...
Right, but it's still, but I, I know those ones over in Sandburn that they built a year or so ago, I think they're all filled.
Right.
I think they'd be perfect on that old camp property, 'cause they don't put basements under them, so...
Right.
I, I talked to a contractor a couple of years ago about it, but I got chastised by the Mid-City Clerk about it, so...
Yeah, and I don't know who built the ones in Sandburn. They built quite a few.
I mean, so do the city own them and then they, and then they pay upfront? Or do the people who buy them, we do something like this and then, or...
What I've heard over there, and the reason I know is because it's Tim's mother-in-law that's one of them, and she pays a thousand a month as a rent.
Okay.
But I think it includes her utilities.
And like she has no mortgage, no...
She does nothing. They take care of everything, but she pays a thousand a month. If you were 30 years old, you probably wouldn't want to do it, 'cause you're not gonna own it and you don't want to keep going like that. But for someone who's retired, they're still on a mend.
Yeah, my mom's in the senior living apartment in Council Palace, and that's what she does. She gives thousands, she gets two meals a day and they come in once a week and clean her place.
Yeah, no, they, I have meals and all the cleaning, but I know the, the outside is all taken care of and I think it includes the utilities. I won't swear on that.
The ones up by the car wash, they're privately owned though, aren't they?
I think so.
Yeah, but they, but they, no, up here. But I think they pay maintenance.
Oh, yeah, there, yeah. But I think, and these are over on the east side of Sandburn.
Oh. Oh, Felman's.
No. The ones that, yeah, Marlin and...
Oh, okay.
Where, they're on the east side?
They're on the east side. You, you come in a ways though, a little ways, right off the highway there.
Okay. Kind of down by their business park? Kind of down by their business park?
Yeah, where they put in a bunch of new houses, but now in between, they must add some extra ground and they put in all these kind of duplexes. I don't know if there's two or three at a time, you know, together.
'Cause east of the golf course, they probably bought some new houses too.
Yeah, around that area too, yeah.
We have something that maybe we need to maybe call Sandburn and get some more information.
Yeah, that wouldn't hurt, maybe find out, get a few details.
Maybe send some dealers out to some contractors to see if they wanna...
Who's doing it?
Who's doing it, if they want to invest. I'll call the guy I talked to.
I mean...
I know like, Sue Center, all those new homes they're building out there, those are, that property is owned by a company by the name of Highland Development Corporation. And they came in and they bought all the property and developed it and then sold the lots.
Yeah.
And the city put in the utilities and the, I don't know if they agreed to put streets in or if that company put streets in, but...
Where have they been doing some on, as you came into Orange City on 10 or 2?
Yeah.
There's, looks like they were doing a bunch, I don't know what they were gonna be, it was housing or duplexes or what they were doing.
I mean, it's not gonna...
If you go behind, if you go behind the hospital, there's a bunch of them there too. Somebody's built a bunch of duplexes there.
Well, I think the hospitals are adding on back in there too, yet another chunk.
Yeah, they're build retirement homes.
That's what it is.
Like a, not a assisted living, but a senior living, I think.
Yeah, I think so.
Like my mom lives in something like that.
Yeah, something that we can always look into.
So, what do we have in these two lots, the home camp, home camp lots? I mean, what do we have in the...
I think it was like 16,000, wasn't it?
Didn't take that house down. Can't remember for sure what it was, but... I thought it was 12,000, but, because remember that he didn't take that big tree? We kind of went back and forth over that. I thought it was around 12,000, but I don't know.
If you ever revised his bill for that.
Yeah.
Yeah, we should decide what we want for those lots.
Yeah, 'cause my callback was interested at first. Do we have like a...
Finance, I think I was gonna have her look it up. It's up on the sheet up there, isn't it? See who was on that, is it? I think so. Oh, not on that one, I've unbolted the door, sorry.
Tickle with your, tickle with your bushlot covenants, Jay? Light number seven. So, the new slot will contain a 30-foot utility, it's on the east side. And the north lot of the Bush, they should all contain a 30-foot utility on the north side. So, there is a...
So, I knocked it down from 105 to...
What was it down to? So, you still have that property, still own that property, but there's easement on it, so you can't build on it. But they couldn't build on it.
But they still...
The other Bushlot?
The Bushlots.
The one on the corner?
They only, they only have like 70 feet in it, one thing.
It's a little skinnier.
No, what were, how deep were they? The Bushlots?
185?
185. Wide, 85 deep.
135 wide?
No.
No, they're 185 deep.
They're 105.5 by 185.
Yep. So, you take your, so you take your 30 foot off of the...
Be 75, which is 75 feet. In front.
East and west are 185.
I thought you just said...
They're wider, wider and deeper?
It's 105 this way and 185 this way.
Yeah, that's what he's saying, opposite.
Along Day Street or along Wood Street, it's wide or is...
No, he's, see, it's, it's only, on the front of the street, it's only 105.
Yeah.
Correct.
Right.
Yeah. So, then you gotta take 30 feet off of that.
Well, that easement is right here though.
I don't know.
That easement is right here.
Yeah, on your north lot.
On the north, right.
You take 30 foot off of the north side and 30 foot off of the east side of that lot.
Which makes it a lot smaller than the other lot.
And east, whole exact, you said it doesn't show, but it is there?
Yep, it is there.
For what, for access to the farm?
No, it's, I think it's drainage, isn't it? Does that water come off that street down? There's a...
Well, that's, yeah, that's why it's going here, but why is there one, he's saying one all along as well?
Because, so if they ever run utilities or that, these guys can get to run utilities and stuff, right? Is that, where's their sewers run? Runs to the back of them houses, don't it? And then to that middle, that street?
The sewer runs down Wood Street.
Wood Street, everything's on Wood Street.
Everything's on Wood Street. See, the utilities are all on the west end of those lots, along the street. So, I don't know why they ever put a 30-foot utility easement on the east end of those lots, if they had in mind that they were gonna put all the transformers on that, go down the north of that north lot and then all on the east end and put all the transformers on the... But that doesn't, didn't make sense to do that either. So, but that's, that's what the easements are, that's where they're at.
And once there's an easement, you can't change it?
Well, we, the city probably could change the eas, yeah, they could probably change the easement. But no, you can't, I mean, you could, we could remove that easement on the east end, but we, now that there's a home built there, I don't know that we can, I don't know how you do, put the easement back on the west end of the property. How that would work. Something, question for somebody more authority than me.
There is an easement on the west end.
That's like part of your road, like...
Your street.
Parking.
Yep.
Parking.
Yep.
There's parking there.
Yep.
There's one back there. In the field.
Your grass next to the field, 30 feet in.
Yep. So, I don't, I don't know why they ever put that on there.
Yeah, that's weird.
It is. If they had in mind that they were gonna develop more houses to...
But they couldn't because of the...
You gotta be a thousand feet from the sewer.
Sewer. Right. And that is a thousand feet right there. So, I don't know why that is.
But I think, I think, I know it's gonna cost us again, but if we do, we should try to buy that land back behind Franks and all that, if we wanted houses.
Who's got that now, nickel fee?
Land.
The lanes have that?
That's that, must be switched.
That's the way. Over there.
We never even thought about that, keeping that.
Trade in lake land for lake land. We needed to trade outside land. Things, you ended up with stills.
Well, it was three to one.
Nothing. You did get, that voted on it? No, the acreage. Oh.
It was three to one. 'Cause that development land was 30,000 acres.
Many acres are bad either.
They got, they got 30 acres, 30 acres, 'cause it was only 10 acres over here at the business park, wasn't it? They got only 10 acres we got over here and they got 30 over here. It goes quite a ways down there.
Right, but we can't build beyond 1,000 feet, whatever.
No, but I'm just saying there's room there though, 'cause all that. Yeah. 'Cause I don't know where else you'd build.
Kind of landlocked.
Yep. South is the only way, I've got other, those other thousands, south and brown.
Where do we go? Let's build high rises. There you go. We get a second story and let me put you, by the way, I have to leave that off the list. We talked about it and I haven't put it on. Is the old Iowa State Bank, which is why I know Nick's here to talk, say whatever, introduce himself, but just for in general, just someone you'd ask that account. I believe you're giving like 70-something, 63, 76. I don't have one past that for revenues that they gave to mitigate the asbestos. And now that account is down to 30. Yeah, it's just, you're using it to pay utilities anytime, you know, anytime you're on a renter and you're...
We got new furnaces.
Yeah, and so we've invested in it and now we don't have any rent to offset it, but you also, yeah, you have issues to figure out on what to do there. Yep.
So, is this Steven here?
He wants to talk about it.
About it? Should we have to talk about it?
And Nick, would, would you introduce yourself and some of them don't know you? Tell them.
Hi, good afternoon, my name is Dick Coice, I live over in Marcus and I actually manage the cemetery here in town. I'm currently renovating a house in Sutherland. Formerly the Pear Tree House, they call it. It was formerly the museum over there, so that's what I've been working on lately. But no, last year on March, I approached the city, just kind of was, you know, just kind of, some general information about the 105 Main Street over here. And so, you know, I didn't know what the city wanted to do, so I asked them. You know, they, they weren't sure at the time and so, you know, and obviously, you know, I have a workshop now and so, you know, that's just another thing that's on the docket. It's another thing on your plates. But no, my interest is, I mean, I'd like to purchase the building or enter into contract in some way and then turn the building into part residential, mixed-use, parts residential, part commercial space. And I actually have the, that's the beacon printout of that building if they... I'm unsure if you, I didn't see it on the list, so I printed out some on my own.
Have you been all through that building?
I've been through it twice. I went with Scott and once with Kelly. And then I also have comparable properties from properties in Sioux County, O'Brien County and then Cherokee County in these holders.
So, what would you want to do with that, like, commercial, like what would you do?
Well, it would be, my interest is the building itself and the renovation. You know, the space would be up to whoever would purchase or enter in the lease on that. My, my intent is to get the building up and running. And the best way to do that would be for it to be a mixed-use, having commercial on lower level and then residential on top. That's really the only way to get that kind of money into the building. That's what you guys want.
Actually, the back part's not in too bad a shape.
No, no, no.
The front part, you need to tear out that stupid thing up above.
And then I only have four copies, so... Sorry.
Oh, that's okay.
But anyway, yeah, that's my intent and I also have introduction letters.
If we ever did sell this property, we'd have to litigate the asbestos first, right?
It would probably be up to whoever bought it. I mean, it would kind of be in the...
'Cause at one time, that was, what, how many years ago? It's 42,000, I think, that he gave us. Is that what it's up to now?
Well, I didn't think he gave us that much.
I'm 73 in that one. I think it was 45, but...
Yeah, I thought it was right over there.
Maybe that's part of that list for the...
Yeah, I don't know, I, that's what I remember.
Yeah, that would be the best way of doing it.
Would you, would you have to put a, kind of a help in?
See, and that's, that's one of the questions. It depends what the use would be, you know?
Sixty or seventy.
Yeah, the problem is the arse, remember?
You wouldn't want us up more than three units up there anyway, because of the freighter system and other, other things, so... It would just depend on layout, you know, after an engineer's...
It'd be a solid.
But no, this is just something that, I was looking at last year and around that. You know, I talked to Brendan recently and I met over there with council numbers and they're discussing stuff, we're kind of a little lost. That's about it. But yeah, in that folder, I included four other different properties in the area that had something on Main Street that were double-story.
So, you, you have an idea of how much you would think about buying it for? Do you want...
Well, no, actually, that's what I would kind of, you know, I, that's why, you know, that's what I'd like to know. I mean, that's, if, you know, obviously I'm bringing up the subject as to, you know, it'd be up for you guys to set some price. You know, whether you work with a bank or a realtor, you probably have someone independent do us a kind of look at it. But no, I'd like to, you know, I'd like to get my contractor in to do some inspections. But no, my, my initial interest was leasing, you know, means that I knew that the lease was coming up last year and it was ending. And so, I was interested in leasing it, but now, you know, the intent is to purchase it, but, you know, however person can get the foot in the door. So, I would like to lease it if I would, you know, kind of get my... But anyway. But also, I'd like to...
But what happens if we, yeah, what happens if we said...
The lease breaks and you've done all this renovation.
And you just tore it apart.
Yeah, you tore it apart.
Well, that, let's say that was my original intent, but now...
But you know, you want to part, now you want to buy it.
It's easier to do that, like, then, that, that, yeah.
Right, it's just search.
You know, when you have to commit, you know, do stuff, it's a lot easier just to hand that off to someone, but then obviously, you know, make sure someone's got the backing. But my project in Sutherland's going pretty well and it's, you know, it's...
It's like his house?
Oh, yeah, yeah, that's, that's it. I included that in there.
So, are you doing the work in the one in Sutherland or you got people there? Or what are you doing?
Yeah, I'm doing some of the work, most of it. Yeah, I'm doing some of the work. Most of it is contracted out. So that, that's, you know, it's...
Like you bought that building?
Yeah, it's me and my family. We're, we kinda, we're starting to get into this stuff. They have other rental properties in Sioux City. But this is more of a, you know, we wanna take historic buildings and do them up proper, and so that's, that's, that's what this is.
Oh, go on, or, sorry. So is this the house and the gas station piece?
Yeah, it's all one lot, yeah. So that was, whether the gas station stands or not, there's no tanks or anything. It's just a building and everything's there. No, it's a, it's quite a project, but, um, no, if there's ever any questions or...
Do you have a number? If somebody, we could, it's up to you, you have your phone number or anything?
I have one here.
Okay, so you have it?
Yeah.
Yeah?
I have a number where they don't...
Oh.
But I'm in Sutherland, I don't know, something for any reason.
My email, I'll let you know.
Oh, yep, right here.
But, uh, no, it, um, you know...
Well, do you want, if you wanna bring somebody in, just get with us and...
Yeah, no, I love to have, actually, my main contractor, um, is actually the mayor of Sutherland's husband. So it's been a real close, close knit project over there. Uh, we're not one forty into that, into that particular house. I mean, but it's three thousand or perhaps two.
So are you gonna sell it, or?
Yeah, I did, I was too, but the more we get into it, the more, uh, we're getting a lot more public input and a lot of people that kinda wanna see us making, maybe, you know, like a, like a Virgo or Airbnb platform.
Oh, yeah.
As a single, as a single residence, it probably couldn't command the rent anymore. But anyway, and I love to, you know, I'm always showing people, I'm always showing off people and, you know, that'd be a fun thing to maybe, you know, show some, uh, some committee people. Um, that are, you know, on the buildings committee or whatever, you know, what I've done over there. So yeah, I just wanna, I'm curious myself and I'm kind of following the meetings and...
You too.
Yeah, Stephen Jean, our honor, finance, the Melo Higgin's Shark. Go ahead. Thank you, Nick, for providing that information.
Yes, thank you, Nick.
So yes, we do have that one, we consider as well. It is a major hub and is, yeah, obviously it's a little commercial. You can do the second floor residential based on what you previously had allowed in ordinances, so that still fits with that. As is, without ordinance change or zoning change. Um, we talked about the city park and ballpark and all that. You've got the new lights. Really should take more advantage of that somehow and try to use those lights as often as you can or get more people there to appreciate it. You've talked about updating the wiring and to put outlets, right, at the covered things, shelter, I mean... Yeah, you had a crop pot.
Remember you had a crop?
Oh, crop pot, yeah. Yeah, like crop pot plug-ins, yeah, crop pot plug-ins. Yeah, I think it meant on, in the ground and I went, oh, I don't remember.
Just in that...
Yeah, on, like, you know, if people wanna have...
Picking tables or...
I don't know, not, but like if they wanna have meals or have a potluck or something down there, it's really hard to do when we don't have electric, so we need to... Yeah, that was the only thing. Is that easy to do or no?
Easy enough?
Easy enough. I feel like my dog park right here though.
I know the Little League has expressed interest about updating the dugouts in some fashion. And then also it's been mentioned about the concession stand and the restrooms there at the park to continue to update that. Cause you know, you have the shade, you built the shade in, you had the, the leechers donated, I believe, a few years ago, right?
So that bathroom, there's only one bathroom.
There's two.
There's two bathrooms.
There's a men's and a women's.
I don't know if we want to update that.
Yeah, I don't know. It's pricey when you do bathrooms.
I've got a dog park.
Carol.
I know, but would you be doing that over by town?
Yeah.
We just gotta get those trees out of there.
Yeah. I think we need to have a dog park in town.
Are you in charge to use it?
Huh?
Are you in charge to use it?
I don't know.
So you're just gonna give people a chance to let their dog, or for you, a spot, no one gets to clean up?
Or Kelly has to clean up, or Randy?
Okay, let me call Orange City and see how they run there.
Okay.
I just drove by, that's all I did. At the ti- at the time, I didn't have a dog. Now I have a dog.
Oh, hey, that's why she got the dog.
Okay.
Now everyone's parked for the dog, they got it.
I don't want the dog.
I lost the bet. There is this over, so they have a dog park, like you can take your dog to daycare and it's called Dutch Dogs. Okay, they have a doggy thing there. They also have a dog park over by the wooden playground in Orange City.
Oh.
Yes, so they have a small, they have a small thing for large and then a small animal.
Okay.
And they have a set of rules and everything there. But when I looked, I didn't see that you had to pay or anything for it, so maybe I just need to call Orange City and ask.
I think you're right. I don't think they need to pay to use that.
I mean, you pick up your poop.
Yes, they have to have those rules.
Right, cause that's what Orange City does and that's all, like, it didn't, at the end, never said anything about a fear or anything. But I'm assuming if we put, like, some of these dog parks, they have like water hole, I mean, then maybe you would have to, but, I mean...
Is there an area fenced in over there?
No.
For the dogs?
Yes, in Orange City, yes.
Okay.
Yep.
I do see a lot of people walking their dog in the Little League.
Right, so I'm just saying, it's, this is an idea to let, so they, you know, so then they're not, so then the people aren't picking poop up in the Little League or in the Swanson complex, you know, they always let their dog run around out there.
Yeah, I do see that.
Yep, I agree.
Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
When we, uh, the campground that we went to down in Arizona, all the time, they had like a, um, a pole that was there. And in the top of that, there were doggy bags.
Yes, I was in, yep.
And you just, when you walked, there were several of them around the park for people. And then you just pulled out one bag and then you could carry that with you in case you didn't have one when your dog made a mess. We never had a problem in the park with anybody not picking up after their dog.
Right.
By having those in that area, so if you have a dog park.
Right.
It would be a good idea to install one or two of those where they can get a bag.
Right, and a dumpster.
Use that.
Get a diaper genie.
Diaper genie dumpster, yeah. Dog genie is...
Dog genie.
It's all pretty similar. It's just an idea.
Get diaper genies and vest and vest and...
I think a lot of, I think a lot of people...
Walking thing, keep that going.
I see, you know, if you get that going or the bike trails, I mean, then you got, you know, people can... I don't know, it's better than looking at what we're looking at, so it's getting used. That was just my idea.
At Staples, that, um, Melinda got me, it's like a little suitcase. And it attaches to his leash. And in this little suitcase are doggy bags that you can pull out and use when you walk. So, those are options.
What a good idea.
I mean, we would have to come up with a set of rules and, and all that and put some, maybe some cameras or something down there. If we did do it, you know, cause then we have proof that...
Someone saw it.
Yeah. Or if there was like a vicious dog, something happened, you know, then we got cameras.
Yep.
Well, it is a nice piece of property. There, I think some kinda park there would be great. Especially if where it's catching through the trails, there's snakes in it.
Right.
Yeah, or something. Yeah, well, use some of the trees, cause those are nice.
Right, the shade or, no, but...
Thumping.
True.
Majority of them are ash trees, is the unfortunate part.
Yeah. That's the ones that were left.
Yeah, they harvested walnut trees on it.
Yeah.
Did that a while back.
That was a couple of years ago.
Left a mess. Mm, they left a mess.
Any other properties to mention that we haven't discussed? That anybody's been dying to talk about or we just need to put on people's radar?
Well, there's one uptown, there's been, what, about three people who have talked about building, but they're not, it's never happened.
Which one?
The one, the pocket one.
I think we, I know we can't make a decision here, but I think we should make a decision on what to do about the olden camp lots.
I think we need to get some bids or get, talk to Sam Bourne and see what they all did about putting something like that in.
Well, but...
You've got people ready to make a bid on those.
That's what I mean, if we have people, interest is now, we better move forward.
Maybe we need to do something like Sheldon did. I don't know.
We are, we are, it's one lot, it's gonna be two lots.
It's two lots.
I think, you know, we're just saying it.
And they have to build a house on each lot, right?
Right. Hopefully, I mean, that's up to you, but I would think that makes some sense.
Right.
That's how we're not, you're just having a way around the game. And without houses.
The, yeah, I guess if you look at the ordinance, they can't just build a garage there.
No.
No, I asked you a house or a...
There has to be a residence.
Unless they're, unless one of the people are in, in, what's that? If they have the house and then they buy that property, then they can add an addition or they can put a garage up. It's cause it's conge- it's with your...
I don't want it to buy, I want it to go to a garage.
Right, but it's, but if they have the option to do that, if somebody, like...
If it's an adjoining property.
Yes, thank you, adjoining property. If that's, you know...
But ideally, that's...
That's not ideal what we want, but, you know...
Cause that's what you have a push, which is why he said is, you end up having lots to sell and you ended up selling...
Yep.
To four houses essentially, so much we can get now.
So if somebody wanted a really big lot, they could buy two, could they put them together then?
Go by the country. We need more houses in this house than we, than we lose.
We don't need more big yard. Right, I think we need, if we're gonna sell them, they, we need to sell them as two properties and they have to build a house.
Or residence, or, they could do a, they could do a, one kind of a duplex there.
Yeah.
Even with the house on the line.
It has to be a reason for that.
For the duplex, commercial.
Yeah.
But that's, that's...
But I think it should be, yeah, offered that way.
Okay, do we want to, do you want to give your, the lead to your two committees and committee people to kind of come up with something and present it at May 1?
It's not gonna happen.
How about maybe, maybe by the second meeting of May?
May fifteenth.
Let's shoot for the second meeting in May.
May fifteenth, alright.
And who's on that committee?
Steve will be, Steve is lead and Gina's as second.
Okay.
Finance, finance and housing, or...
I started writing mine and I forgot.
Forgot right here.
Lexi's got it.
Finance and economic development, properties.
Gina, are you, hmm, finance and economic development is Steve and Gina, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
So should we, did we have anybody make offers on it yet, or?
Not yet, officially, they requested some of this paperwork and they're, been asking and all we've actually been telling them is what was an authority, eight thousand. But then we said, if you have an offer, bring it, so how do you, at least can...
We on the list.
Don't know.
Yeah, I think, yeah, I guess if somebody made an offer, then that would give them a starting point. If not, we can come up with our own starting point.
Yeah, right, I think it's about time too, cause you...
I think it's something, if we did something kind of like Sheldon did, I mean, we gotta get...
Some incentives.
Some incentives out there, I guess.
Well, I think we should check with that, like I said, Sam Bourne.
Well, see what Sam Bourne did, yeah.
When we first acquired the lots, I mentioned to Sandy that, you know, literally not give them away, but make it...
Cheaper prices.
Make it a deal and give it to them if they promise to build something or come up with something.
I still think we need to give them probably like a minimum of two to three years, so maybe...
Oh, yeah.
Oh, two years. Cause you got, cause it's, it's gonna be housing, so you're gonna get... It's like, this business park, we're, we lose, we lose so much money on that thing. We lost a ton of money on that thing.
Yeah, if you're gonna put a timeline on it, probably not a bad idea.
We just don't want somebody, you don't want somebody to buy it and just keep it as long as what you have. You have extensive lawn right now.
Right.
That is helping no one.
And doesn't help the tax base.
Doesn't help, doesn't help town grow, doesn't help us...
Lower my assessment.
Get a job still.
Yet, um, you know, you probably wanna time, not to put a timeline, but to get a contractor, to get a contractor, for sure take a year to have, get a contractor to commit to it.
That's why I said at least a minimum of three.
So, yeah, you need a...
Cause we gave three to the...
Field.
The fields.
Yeah.
That one, that one gal, she's the, bought your brother's one, she's starting there pretty soon, I think.
I think she's waiting for her contractor.
Yeah, Brad Smith's doing that, I think.
Yeah, he is, but he's finishing, or he's still with Progo, that's him with addition. So he's doing that and then he does hers.
So what, it's all Progo doing, just, new kitchen and stuff?
Yes, but I heard they also didn't want shorties.
That's what I heard, too.
Once they start with their addition and, and building there, they can't serve food, so they're gonna go across.
Oh, okay.
And now then, and then, then if they'll resell it, I don't know. I've heard that, that they might resell after that.
I would just close it down like, like Casey's did, to carry your business.
Yeah, but, who knows?
Are there any vacant lots in town that we might think about?
Buying for someone?
Yeah.
That one Barry Johnson's had forever by the school.
Yes. Yes.
I don't know what the deal on that is, when it's never sold. Yeah, that's what I heard, too. The one over on the southeast corner of the school, across the way.
That one came through with the development?
That one did. How much was he asking you?
No, I don't see that, so we just hear, you just see the transfer over from that thing.
Is there such type of thing that we can be like, you have to live in your house for so many months out of, you know what I mean? Can we make that rule? Because there's so many houses in town that people just buy in for storage. And they are probably, could be good houses for people to buy. Can we make that a rule? I understand people go to Snowbirds, I get it, like, I understand.
Right.
But can we make some type of rule that you have to live nine months out of the year, you gotta live in your house, or?
I don't know if you can do that, but it's no residence.
No, you can. It's called occupancy rule or permit. You have to have, it's the same thing, and so that you prevent people from just stockpiling houses for use. Which is essentially taking us, taking them off the market for anyone to grow, develop. Many of them are not even using utilities, so we're not even getting that, but now we do.
Right.
Now we have some utilities on, we have none of that.
So that's what I'm asking.
We're just, yes, it's a bigger process. I didn't know you'd do that.
So what would be...
There's two open lots on this next block over here. The one Brad, Brad Corman's got, the one by the, the thing, it's got that one car on the end, that's a big piece of property down there.
Well, then it's too bad we couldn't, we wouldn't start advertising that. People would know that, but I don't know, are they not wanting to sell, sell it for?
Look, so many spirits are there, I'm sure.
Three or four houses up on there at Adams.
Yeah, right.
I know. We've talked about that.
That's what I'm saying, can we, that's what we need to, I don't know, look into or get some more information. I don't know if Tish would have that information, what to do, or what we can do. Maybe she can come to one of the meetings and maybe explain it to us.
Cause he's not even up there.
That or there's some that are probably, should be condemned as stairwrecked or...
Right.
Couple of them over there, way over on that side, that should be taken down. They need to just...
I don't think anybody's even living on a couple of them.
Right, I, I mean, there's, there's one by over where I live and I have no idea who lives there. It's white with black trim, right next, right next to Frank Kenninger. I have no idea who lives there.
My mom lives in it now.
No, I...
They were remodeling, in the process of remodeling, but I don't think they've done anything.
On the north side of Frank?
No, it's right behind me.
On the left side, I don't know my...
I was talking about Hurwick's house.
Mrs. Hurwick's.
Okay, yeah, they, it's two, two brothers that bought it. They live in Sioux Center. And the object of, they bought it, they're remodeled, they're supposed to be remodeling it and then they wanted to use it as a rental property. But the only thing they have done to that house so far is painted the outside to make it look better. They did come and mow the yard, um, about a week, well, not a week ago, a few days ago. Um, and I needed to get a hold and find out what that kid's name is, because they've left the lights on in the basement on that house. When they were there, they never turned the basement lights off. But I don't know who they are. I just, I visited with him because there was a walnut tree in the back that came volunteer. And it was rubbing on my little utility shed back there. And I got ahold of them, if they could please cut that or trim it. And he was very accommodating and came and cut it down. He didn't know the first thing about cutting a tree, but he did it down. And, but that's what I know about that house. And they, they haven't done anything to the inside.
Well, like Tumbo's house, too. Yeah, that's the, he's...
That would be a place, that would be a nice lot, too.
How many years have we been on, he's had that, or...
That's what I'm saying, is there such things?
Just need to encourage your neighbors who don't have anyone in it or a house that's empty or if you know the families, encourage them to say, hey, can you put that back on the market? Or do you wanna have your landlord, you know, we need houses for people to take jobs and when new teachers move to town and they're having to go elsewhere, because they don't have the insurance.
David Wester uses the house north of me as a company house. When he has company, that's where he puts them.
Yeah. The guy that was mayor.
Okay, I didn't know.
Put them somewhere.
His name was Peter.
No, put them in your house. And all the people I knew around here, he's doing that as Mary. Yeah, she's got, she's got another one she's working on, Green Street.
Yeah, that's been sitting empty for a long time, too.
So just, yeah, I would say spread the word and let people know you're interested in having to bring something to the table or offer something to the city.
Well, how about these empty properties, can we send a letter to the, the people who own the property and ask if they're, what they want for them or?
If they would be interested in selling them.
Yeah, cause like Brad's over here and then.
Does Brad still own that or does Van Vee go in it? Cause I see her kind of park her vehicle and stuff in that garage.
She owns it now.
Right, okay, thank you. Angie Van Vee.
Oh, she owns that now, okay, okay. Brad used to.
Right.
Yeah, like she just wanted to grow, so she put her hands in.
Well, ask her, you know, when she was selling property.
My heart's gone.
That's right. I think that's just a general rule going forward to say, yeah, bring us some ideas if you have any, if anyone wants to make some donations of land or houses to the city. I'm sure we can figure something out to give.
I'll donate my rental house, but you have to keep it under.
Let me talk to what Jean, you want to talk about, on the lot, or, and see what we can come up with.
Did you hear that?
I know.
Carol and I can get together in dog park.
Dog park.
Dog park, do a, okay.
Well, we also talked about.
Bill a splash dog.
And pickle, we can talk about pickleball.
Bill a splash dog.
And I don't know where Grandville was.
Grandville's in their tennis court in their park.
In their park down.
All down there, okay. I didn't know where it was.
So yes, I think.
So this.
We may not get it by May 1st, it might be a second one, so. Okay, May 15th, May 15th, before May 15th.
Yeah, you have to us by like five minutes, four days before that, so you can tell me and I'll see you.
So this, this pickleball thing, is there any kind of funding for that, for recreation stuff?
Yes, yes, there is. There was just a great grant. I just didn't have time to apply for them. Yeah, the city or anything or anyone to do it at the time, but Brasser has given all that.
I saw that for two quarters, about forty thousand.
Yeah, twenty thousand and really only more than forty.
You see how much that's hard?
Do we need to go twenty-five hundred?
Let's do one.
For, yeah, that's what I said, let's do one, as it goes.
I think it goes like crazy. I think we'll let everybody.
Well, then make him start a little fun thing there and say donate.
Yeah, can you do?
Can you rush white out there?
Donate so we can buy boards.
They put their hand, if they don't put money in it, it hangs onto them.
Let's see if we stay.
Cause that's the day down by the dugout, they have some kind of like.
Carol, we'll have to get together.
Hey, do we have an emotion to close?
I'll make the emotion to close the workshop.
I'll second. Oh, Jean.
An emotion to close our workshop. Do we have any other discussions, comments?
Well, Krieger wants us to get back to him, so we're gonna talk about Kelly and working with trees and with Carol and Michelle. So did anybody have any thoughts when they wanted to get?
This is on Thursday.
It's on Thursday.
I totally forgot, I'm so sorry.
Everybody does. Send it to her. By Monday, maybe we'll all say, okay.
Michelle, no Thursdays.
And they don't wanna do Wednesdays, but I was thinking the end of the month, Wednesday would probably be a good one to do.
April, next week or May, that's.
I don't know. We're on the last week of April, right?
Yeah. It's supposed to be like a Tuesday.
Well, we have a meeting on Monday, I think, so wait.
Let me have Wednesdays, no Fridays.
I know.
Everybody has to send their nose, can't do it on, to somehow, or if you, or you just know Thursdays, it could be after eight.
It has to be after eight on Thursdays.
No, it's a stretch Thursday.
Anyway, just send it all so we all spend more time doing this here, but you won't hear that.
Yeah, so we need a power date so she can tell them.
They give us some dates.
That's what I said to her. I said, what's your date? And then she said, no Wednesdays. And I think, we only have one meeting a month.
Yeah.
You've got two.
So it's all on paper for the journey to our workshop, say aye, thank you, almost. Don't be a. Okay, all I, all I suppose is Carrie's, we workshop adjourned at six forty-four.
Yeah, oh, was it the big season?